Good morning. And today is Wednesday, March 24th, 2021. Welcome to our Board of Supervisors, sitting as the County Board of Equalization. This is an assessment appeal hearing. It was posted and final. The attendance of this meeting is closed to the public per the Governor's executive order. The public may join this meeting by Zoom. Can we have the Pledge of Allegiance held by Supervisor Tiffany?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just for transparency purposes, there is one supervisor, Peter Hernandez, who is on via Zoom. The other four supervisors are present and in person in this building here. Can we have the acknowledgment certificate of posting, please?
I'll move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
We got a first, we got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, motion passes. Let's go to the notice of temporary procedures for the Board of Equalization meetings. Madam Clerk, or Assistant Clerk?
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Board. Good morning, community members. If you'd like to make a comment.
Speaker? Is your speaker up?
Is it on? You can't hear me?
No. Bring the mic closer to you.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Board. Good morning, community members. If you'd like to make a comment, you can press star nine or the raise hand icon on your screen on Zoom. Thank you.
Okay. Our assessor, Tom Slavich, is at the podium right now. We'll go into our regular agenda. We will be looking at applicant John C. Chang from Chevron.
Good morning.
Mr. Slavich?
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. First applicant, John Chang from Chevron. This is the Chevron gas station across from Safeway. The application number is A439. The applicant nephew has signed the withdrawal form for his uncle. The nephew actually, David Doan, and David Doan actually runs the Chevron station there for his uncle. And so we recommend you accept the withdrawal, but also deny the appeal due to the lack of appearance by the applicant.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the Board. What's the wish of the, any questions from the Board? What's the wish of the Board?
I move that we accept the withdrawal.
Is there a second?
And do we need to accept the withdrawal and?
Deny.
And deny the appeal due to lack of appearance by the applicant.
Thank you. Friendly amendment. I move to accept the withdrawal and then to deny the appeal.
Second? There's a second? What's the wish of the Board?
And just for the record, they're not present in person or on Zoom.
And they are not in person or on Zoom.
Clerk, can you confirm that there are nobody, that they're not present on Zoom as well?
Is applicant John C. Chang on, or any of, anyone representing this individual on Zoom?
Okay.
No, they, we have, for the record, there is no one on Zoom or in the quarters here. We had a first, we had a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Peter? One more time, Peter?
Aye, Mr. Chair.
That's five, zero, motion passes. The second one is applicant White Wave Food Natural Selection Foods, Earthbound Farms. Go ahead, Mr. Slavich.
Yes, Mr. Chair. On this particular one, in the pack, there's also some withdrawals, which I'll kind of go over, besides the extensions. The Earthbound also appealed on several years, 2019 and 2020, on two real property parcels. They went ahead and actually withdrew those appeals, I just wanted to make that point. Regarding their request for continuance, it's regarding the unsecured account 850-00524, and it pertains to the personal property assessments, and we're going to be working with them through audit to try to resolve this issue. So basically, we have no issues with the extension requested. Our recommendation is you accept the requested continuance and have the Chair sign the extension of time request.
Is anyone from White Wave Foods, Natural Selection Foods, Earthbound, on the Zoom call or in the quarters here? And you're saying to go ahead and?
Grant the continues.
Okay, what's?
Is that contingent upon them signing any sort of waiver of time, or have they done it for all the applications?
They've already done the waiver of time in all those prior years, so, and they're aware of this, and they want to resolve this thing, so we're going to be working with them.
What's the wish of the Board?
I'll make a motion that we accept the continuance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five, zero, motion passes. We'll go to number three, the Barbara Mario Trust.
Yes, this is the, actually, this is the Walgreens property there, the new Walgreens property, next to the Chevron across from Safeway. And in this particular situation, there's, there's three appeals, three different years. The applicant has requested an extension. We have no issues with that extension, so we recommend you accept the continuance and have the Chair sign the extension of time request.
Are the applicants either on Zoom or in the quarters here? Can you bring it back to the Board? What's the wish of the Board?
I'll move that we accept the continuance and authorize the Chair to sign the extension.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five, zero, motion passes. We'll go to number four, applicant Northwest Packaging Company.
Yes, this is our local cannery, and in this situation, the agent has requested an extension, and we have no issues with that continuance, and we recommend you accept the requested continuance and have the Chair sign the extension of time request.
Is the applicant on Zoom or in the quarters here? Seen none, we'll bring it back to the Board. What's the wish of the Board?
I'll make a motion that we accept the continuance and direct the Chair to sign the extension.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
We'll give it to Peter. Peter has a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, motion passes. Number five, the applicant is the American Tower LLC, site number 41714.
Yes, in this situation, the taxpayer has also requested a continuance. We have no issues with that continuance. We recommend that you accept the request of continuance and have the Chair sign the extension of time request.
Is the applicant out in the, in the quarters here or on Zoom? Seen none, we'll bring it back to the Board. What is the wish of the Board?
I'll move that we accept the continuance and authorize the Chair to sign the extension request.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five, zero, motion passes. We'll go to number six. The applicant is Loews, H.I.W. Incorporated?
Yes, this is a vacant parcel here in town. The applicant requested a continuance. Again, our recommendation is you accept the request of continuance and have the Chair sign the extension of time request.
Is the applicant in the quarters or on Zoom? Seen none, we'll bring it back to the Board. What is the wish of the Board?
I'll make a motion that we accept the continuance and direct the Chair to sign the extension.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five, zero, motion passes. Number seven, the applicant is Rayleigh's Family of Stores, Siri Rev T R.
Yes, this is our local Nob Hill store. The applicant's requested a continuance. We recommend you accept the request of continuance and have the Chair sign the extension of time request.
Is the applicant on Zoom or in the quarters here? Seen none, we'll bring it back to the Board. What's the wish of the Board?
I'll move that we accept the continuance and authorize the Chair to sign the extension request.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five, zero, motion passes. We are down to our last one. Number eight, the applicant, Peninsula Packaging LLC.
Yes, this is unsecured account 850-00525. The property location is 2401 Burt Drive. The appeal application number is A433. The actual assessment year is 218, and this is evaluation date of property as of January 1st, 2018. That's the assessment date.
Okay, and the individual here is in front of us in the quarters here. Just to give a little bit of the instructions, the commencement of hearing, at the commencement of the hearing, we have already announced that this is the applicant, Peninsula Packaging LLC. What we'll do is, the clerk will announce the applicant.
Good morning, Chair, members of the Board. The applicant today is Peninsula Packaging. For all of you that will be testifying on these matters, please stand and raise your right hand. If you could please state your name for the record. Do you solemnly state under appendmentary perjury that the evidence that you shall give in this issue or matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
So, in this, oh, and you want to continue?
Yeah, I just will, what I'll say is that, I will, what we'll do is, the presentation of the evidence will be provided by the applicant's agent, and then after that, we will have our assessor being able to say their part. We'll go back to the applicant, and then at any point in time, if the Board members have any questions, please chime in. This is to me, I'll do it a little bit different. I'd rather catch them when the, their questions are there, rather than at the very end and writing everything down. That's just kind of the way I do things, just a little bit easier than remembering everything. So from here, I will give it over to our assessor, Tom Slavich.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, in this situation, I just wanted to go a little bit over the valuation. The assessor's valuation, total valuation for this property was 17.3 million, roughly. The applicant's opinion of value is roughly $5.9 million. The breakdown includes structural improvements, tenant improvements, fixtures, and personal property, and I believe the main issue here is the personal property, I believe.
That is correct. So just, just for some clarification, 17 million was the evaluation?
17.3 million was the assessor, was the evaluation on the?
Five, five million was their assumption?
Yes.
Therefore, the difference is roughly, in round numbers, about $12 million.
Well, the personal property was, was, if you break it down, just personal property, it's 15.4, and their opinion of value, just on personal property, is 5 million.
And so that's a difference of roughly 10 million?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
We have a slightly amended opinion of value, but, um, uh, we, I can get into that when I test.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to kind of outline what we're looking at, not, you know, we're not speaking of fifty dollars. We're speaking of, you know, a pretty large amount.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm just going over the application, what was, what, you know, what was filed, so.
Thank you.
I, I just don't want there to be any confusion.
Oh, no, no, not at all, sir, thank you.
So in this case, the applicant has the burden of proof, and we'll be presenting first, and Mr. Jason Morris, tax agent, uh, representing Peninsula Packaging, will be presenting, so. Jason?
Uh, thank you. Uh, first, I'd like to thank the board and, uh, everyone here for being here today. I know it's a tough time to, to handle these things. I'd like to just, uh, I'll do my best to be brief and, uh, make sure, and try to make this, uh, informative. Um, the property in, in question is what's called a thermoforming plant. You actually have quite a few of them up here in, uh, San Benito. Essentially, it's a plastics plant, uh, creates the outer shell of the, um, product you see here. Top piece, bottom piece, it's just pressing plastic and, um, and, and selling those.
So are those the, what we refer to sometimes as clam shells?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Correct. Uh, so the applicant, uh, requests the board consider an obsolescence adjustment for machinery and equipment and process fixtures on the subject property. Uh, the subject property is located at twenty four oh one Burt Avenue and produced agricultural plastics for the fruit and vegetable packaging industry. Uh, the taxpayer asked the board to consider an obsolescence allowance calculated using the plant's excess operating costs. Uh, this method, methodology is prescribed by the American Society of Appraisers in their textbook named Appraising Machinery Equipment. Uh, and is also seconded by the California State Board of Equalization in letter to Assessor, uh, twenty ten thirty, which deals with calculating obsolescence in personal property. Uh, the taxpayer is advocating this approach because the reason, oh, let me add this, the, the facility closed in September of two thousand eighteen. Uh, due to, uh, lower demand for their product, there was, uh, a capacity issue, and the, the, uh, organization had two plants making the exact same pro- uh, product. Uh, one up in, uh, Yakima, Washington, and one here in Hollister. Uh, so they combined the, the production into one of the facilities. The taxpayer is advocating for the approach that we talked about, the excess operating cost approach, because this is the reason why the plant closed. The, uh, owner looked at the cost to produce, uh, the product in Yakima versus here in Hollister, and unfortunately, the Yakima plant, being a newer plant, uh, had just a lower cost to produce. And since the both plants were running at about sixty to seventy percent, uh, they weren't making enough money, uh, to be operated separately, so it made sense to move the production orders from Yakima, or from Hollister to Yakima, and shut down the Hollister plant. And that's what happened. Uh, when we examine the facts of this case and the BOE comments regarding how to apply this appraisal technique, uh, I, I believe it becomes, uh, clear that this approach is relevant and should be utilized. So I'd like to hang out, uh, pass out my exhibits, if that's good.
Did you see other clerks? Scan one, two, Peter?
Click and follow.
I'll do it right now. I'll get a ticket.
Okay, bar eight, was I supposed to bring nine? Apologize for that.
Do we need extra copies? Sorry, was there a need for extra copies? Okay. How many more?
Three, more please.
Three, does the clerk of the board have one, two? Four? Thank you very much.
Now, I hate to get ahead of you, but I know since we have a little bit of time, just real quickly here, is, um, the equipment itself? That's what we're talking about, the equipment, correct?
Yes, sir.
Where is it right now?
Uh, some of it was disposed of when the plant closed, and, uh, the remaining portion was transferred into storage and at the Exeter facility in Tulare County.
Okay. And what, what was the, uh, age of the equipment?
Uh, the age varied, uh, between, I believe, uh, three and ten years.
So were any of the, was any of the equipment fully depreciated?
Uh, well, we don't fully depreciate personal property. Uh, there's always a floor value, so, um, I, it would be hard to say that just from, you know, my answering it right now, I could look through the.
Yeah, but you're saying that some of the equipment could have been three years old. So, but the equipment could still be used again?
Uh, yes, sir, that, that is possible. Now, I, if, if we, uh, I would like to talk about that.
Yeah, I know, I was just, I mean, I know we have some time, full time, so I was just questioning.
I, I could speak to that. Um, this is manufacturing equipment.
Yeah, so none of the stuff went to Yakima?
Uh, no.
None at all?
The orders went to Yakima.
But none of the equipment at all?
Correct, correct. The, there was already, uh, sufficient capacity in Yakima to, um, to fill the orders. Um, and I would like to speak on, um, compatibility of manufacturing equipment. Uh, it's something that's relevant in this case. A lot of manufacturing lines today are, are very technologically designed, and you can't just plug in certain pieces of machinery into them, they're designed from the ground up.
Yes.
Um, and it's just not, so, you know, you might, you might say, oh, well, we transferred them to, to Tulare County. Uh, that may be the case, but can you get any, any, uh, useful, you know, economic value out of them? It's hard to say, because you don't know whether the, that equipment is going to be compatible with the lines they have there. And it's something that we run into a lot, um, you know, I, I was just pointing out that this type of equipment is not.
Yeah, so they're ju-
It's not a sofa, it's not a.
So in Tulare, they're just in storage, they're not being used.
Exactly, yeah. They're kind of there for, um, extra components, um, should there, there be a need. Um, we're probably, we're probably going to have an appeal in Tulare County about the fact that those are idle assets and not being utilized.
So they're basically a boneyard, what I, what I refer to as a boneyard. You, uh, you, you use some of the parts and pieces to, uh, supplement what other line you have.
I would not, ye- I, I suppose so, yeah. I, I don't know if I'd go as far as a boneyard, because boneyards usually, you know, you see a boneyard, there, it's kind of scrap. These are newer pieces of equipment, so they would be utilized where they could, but right now, they're just in storage.
But you said they're not compatible, so.
Uh, I, I, what I, what I'm saying is they, it's, it's, it's a situation where any manufacturing line is, has very specific tolerances to manufacturing. And when you have a certain piece of equipment, you can't necessarily say, well, we'll just hold on to that and plug it in there. If you ask a plant manager, do you want this equipment? They're going to say, of course, of course I do, it's free equipment, I'll take it. But the idea that we can just plug it in there, you know, kind of just say, well, we'll just, we'll just move it over to Tulare, and we use it there, it's not quite that, that simple. Now, I, I wouldn't, I, I think it, I think the, the truth fa- falls in between the two.
Okay.
There's boneyard, and then there's us- utilization, but you're not going to get the utilization you're going to get of that equipment had you designed the, 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 the usage from the ground up. That's really what I'm getting at.
Excuse me, one, one follow-up question. Um, again, I may be getting ahead of things here, but, uh, you mentioned that the equipment at, in the Hollister plant was three to ten years old. How does that compare in age with the equipment at the Yakima plant, which you say is a more efficient plant?
Uh, it's more efficient in many different ways. Uh, as you may know, the Hollister plant, uh, goes back to the early eighties. Uh, the Yakima plant was designed in the mid two thousands. Um, and there's certain things that, in terms of manufacturing layouts, that, that are more efficient. That give that plant, uh, a competitive advantage over, over a Hollister plant that has, you know, it's, it's forty years old. Um, it's, um, it's not designed, the, the workflow isn't as, 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 um, as efficient. Um, there's also going to be issues in terms of, uh, labor costs and, um, uh, freight costs that are going to be less in, you know, rural Washington than you would have in California. Um, those are forms of ex- of external obsolescence that, uh, we think are relevant. Um, ultimately, it comes down to, uh, this case really does, does come down to, um, the plant is in, in Hollister, could produce cases at twenty eight dollars per case. And the plant in Yakima could only, could produce it at twenty, twenty dollars a case. And essentially, both plants are running at like sixty percent capacity. So, uh, the owner said, well, you know, we can't, we can't make money running both the plants at sixty percent. They basically make the same thing, let's move the orders up to, to Yakima, we'll close Hollister, and then we'll just move the, the remaining assets over to Tulare. Hopefully, maybe we can use them, maybe we can't. It's, it's, it's some, it's, you know, it's something that just happened a couple of years ago. But I can't speak to the age of the equipment versus the age of the equipment at Hollister, because it's not, we're talking about multiple items, and they're all going to have different advantages.
So the greater efficiency at Yakima is, is more in terms of location and newer plant and design, as opposed to newer equipment, uh, in, in, versus the Hollister equipment?
I, I think that would be an accurate, uh, description, yes, sir.
Okay.
Just to give you a comparison, uh, Mr. Tiffany, it's similar to Millgard windows. Millgard windows, you know, they left here in the,
Ten years ago.
Ten years ago, and it wasn't because of anything, but we had, I worked at the Millgard at, at that time. We had, uh, extra capacity in Sacramento, so what we did is we shut down the plant here in Hollister and took some of the capacity, gave it to Sacramento, and gave some to Simi Valley. So it's, it's, it's the right, unfortunately, in a business, in, sitting here as a county representative, it's not good, but as a business person, it's good, because you are, if you have, if you're at sixty percent capacity, sixty plus sixty is a hundred and twenty, and if you're more efficient at Yukuma, Yakima. And the labor costs, we all know, cost of doing business out of state is less expensive. But, uh, that's, it's, you know, it's the right thing to do, but we're just here with the sales ta- you know, looking at our property tax, but.
Yes, sir, it's, it's unfortunate, obviously, it's not something that the taxpayer wants to do.
Yeah, is there a right to proceed, Barbara?
Yeah, I think so.
Sorry about that.
Is that okay with us proceeding, or do you need to actually have? I, I don't know whether they've managed to get, scan the ex- well, I mean.
There's a, all the board members are, are here.
I know, but if they're going to be referring to exhibits, I think the assessor's office, and Peter should have the exhibits in front of them. Supervisor Hernandez, I'm sorry.
Well, I think Laura has an exhibit correct. Is that all right, Laura? Can we, can we start?
Have you had time to actually?
Well, I think it's okay to have this, ask questions, but when you're just making the presentation, we need to have this exhibit.
Okay.
Well, Tom can have my exhibit, and I'll share it with, uh, with one of the senior architects.
Is Peter having exhibit?
Yes, Peter has.
Can you share it with Laura real quick, sir? That way we can get going. We've got to have three feet.
We'll have this be the.
You can start, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. So I would like to, uh, go to applicant's exhibit B, which is hopefully right here. Okay, and, uh, there's a blue tab. For those that don't have the blue tab, uh, copies, it's, uh, page eighteen. So what we have here, this is an abridged copy of, um, LTA two thousand ten thirty from the State Board of Equalization to, uh, the county assessors. And it is a calculation, um, when I say abridged, I simply cut out the, the component, it's a hundred-page document, I didn't want to waste printouts, uh, so I just printed out the relevant, uh, section. So what we have is here is, uh, what's called excess operating expenses.
I'm sorry, could you state which page it was?
Uh, it is page.
One eight.
But I, but mine skips from sixteen to twenty-three.
Sixteen to twenty-three. Double sided?
No, you're on exhibit B.
Exhibit B.
Oh, exhibit B, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't want to kill a bunch of trees, um, just for the, the two, the one page. Uh, it's in the second exhibit, sir?
It's the letter.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll just read from the, um, the section here, excess operating expenses. Uh, functional obsolescence may also be, uh, caused by excess operating expenses. In some cases, uh, the replacement equipment, uh, not only has, uh, less acquisition costs, but also may make, may be expensive to operate. In other words, operation efficiencies of equipment may result from excess operating costs, labor, materials, overhead, the kind of things we're talking about. Uh, so the State Board of Equalization lays out a, a calculation to make this, um, excess operating cost allowance. Uh, and that's right there, it starts at the A, so what you do is you take operating expense per unit for the subject property. Uh, you take the operating expense per unit, uh, for the replacement property, and you subtract the two, and the difference is, uh, the excess, uh, operating cost per unit. I'll, I'll go through this, you know, in my, um, presentation with the actual numbers, but I just want to go through it here now. So if you, then you take the number of units you produced that year, and you multiply it by that difference. And that, that will give you, uh, what's called excess operating expense. Uh, so that's the added expense you incurred by producing the property at the higher unit cost. Um, item E is income tax, uh, on incremental income. As you know, uh, a, a business expense such as, uh, manufacturing cost is tax deductible, so you wouldn't be able to take that entire amount, uh, as, uh, a penalty against the value. You have to take off, uh, an allowance for income tax, because it's, it would be deductible, you'd get that back in your income taxes. Um, G, the remaining economic life of the subject, uh, and then the, the net present value. So your operating expenses, the annual operating expenses reduced by income tax, uh, times the applicable, uh, present value of the annuity. Uh, so the American Society of Appraisers also identify situations where functional obsolescence, uh, may be, may be found. Examples are plants involved in the process industry, plants involved in industries that either use assets or manufacture products with a high degree of technology, older plants that have increased si- in size over times, over time, and plants in which there is identical units being produced. So, uh, the applicant looks at this and says, this is exactly why the plant closed. It's unfortunate, but that, the, the unit cost is exactly why, uh, the Hollister plant closed. So we feel this is a relevant way to calculate loss and value. So we're going to be done with this one unless the assessor calls it. And if I could go to exhibit A. And we're going to start on page, actually, I'm going to go over the salient facts real quick. Uh, page three. Um, this is just kind of a summary. So the facility was acquired in a merger with, uh, Sunoco Plastics in early two thousand seventeen. That merger included three other plants that Peninsula, Peninsula Packaging owned at the time, the Yakima plant, as mentioned, uh, the Exeter plant over in Tulare County, and then, uh, a plant in Guadalajara, Mexico. Um, the facility produced agricultural plastic containers for fresh produce. Um, the subject closed in September two thousand eighteen. Production orders were moved to, to the sister plant in Yakima, uh, Washington, due to lower production cost per unit. Uh, the valuation issues that we feel are relevant in this case, uh, we have two actually, but we're only going to proceed with one. Uh, speaking with the assessor and kind of talking over, um, some of the comments they made, we felt like we're only going to, using one approach would be the way to, to, um, best, um, quantify this. Uh, so we're going to ask the board to consider the excess operating cost, uh, analysis. So the taxable value of the property, uh, the taxpayer, taxpayers' new opinion of value under that approach is seven point nine million dollars for the property as of two thousand eighteen. So I'd ask you to go to page seven, which is where the excess operating cost analysis starts. So we've kind of already gone over this, but what, as you can see right in the center, there's a, there's a, um, Excel box that, that shows you the production costs per unit, number of units produced, the cost of goods sold, divide those two, gives you the cost per case. Um, so below that box, we see, um, the State Board of Equalizations formula. So we've got operating expense per unit for the subject property of twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents per case. Operating expense per unit for the replacement property, twenty dollars and sixty cents. Uh, the difference in the operating expense is eight dollars and ninety cents per, per case. Annual operating expenses, they, they produced, uh, Hollister produced in, uh, two thousand seventeen, the calendar year two thousand seventeen, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-six cases. You multiply that by the eight dollars to come up with eight million four fifty-three, uh, seven fifty-one. Uh, we then calculate the, uh, income tax, uh, write-off for the excess operating costs. Uh, we're estimating twenty-five percent. Um, corporate taxes in America, uh, are right around seventeen percent, um, but we're going to go with twenty-five percent in this case, uh, to be conservative. Going on to the next page. Uh, the remaining, uh, economic, uh, life of the subject is one year, uh, so the present value part doesn't really have any effect, so. Uh, the next table you see there, so we have nine hundred and forty-nine units, or nine hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty- So the next table you see there, so we have 949 units, 949,949 units, $8.90 gives you 8,452,751, take out the 2,113,118 for the income tax deduction, which gives you an obsolescence penalty of 6,339,564, 563.
Can I interrupt you real quick?
Of course.
Sorry to, sorry to...
I'm probably going way too fast.
No, 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 just a question, when I'm looking at Hollister from 2017 to 2018, your case has decreased, but your cog increased?
Yes, sir, the plant.
Now, in your cog, explain to everyone what's in your cost of goods sold. It's not just your material, but it is...
Correct, it's labor.
Labor, it could be bonuses, it could be a lot of different things. So you can put more money in your cog to do, to increase the cost per case if you wanted to.
If you want to, I mean, I...
Well, because bonuses are in there and so are payouts and everything else in your cost of goods sold.
Yes, sir, but they would also be in the Yakima plant as well.
Well, they, if, it depends what you're, what you're looking at. So I'm just, what I'm trying to say is that when you're looking at your cog, the materials, predominantly, they're about the same. The actual, when I'm saying cost of goods sold, take out labor, I'm just speaking of raw material needed in order to make those clamshells.
Yep.
They're pretty much the same amount. The only difference would be freight.
Freight and labor, labor would be...
Well, I'm not saying labor right now, because I don't, I can't see, personally, I can't see that increase of cost just on labor.
Are you, you're talking about from 2017 to 2018?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think the answer to their...
That was acquisition cost too, right?
Well, Hollister closed, so there were closing costs that...
But you bought, yeah, so the closing costs are included in this.
Right, and we are not using the 47.
Yeah.
We are using the 2950 and the, the proper way, based on the State Board, is to use the data from the...
The lowest, yeah.
From the subsequent year, yes.
Okay.
So we're using calendar year 20...
2018.
2017 for the 2018 lien date.
Okay.
And calendar year 2017 for the 2018 lien date for both properties.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the taxpayer requests the board enroll, so if we take the 2018 roll value of 14,235,301, and we reduce by the functional obsolescence excess operating costs of 6.3 million, we come up with a value of 7,895,738.
Excuse me, can you tell us what page you're referring to?
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am, 2009, 2009. Page number nine, it's the subject. It's the bottom table. Originally, we had two approaches, so there's two tables there. We're only going to proceed under the second approach after discussing with the assessor.
Now I see the OR.
So on page nine, you should see 14,235 as the 2018 roll value.
Excuse me, I do have a question here.
Yes, sir.
Very beginning, I guess, Tom, you said that the, you're looking at 17.3 assessed value, 15 of 15 million, which was personal property, and then, you know, 5 million was their opinion, but we're looking at 14,235. I'm sorry.
In the beginning, we said that there was a 17.3 million assessed value, 15 of which was the personal property, and I thought I heard 5 million was their opinion.
Yes.
How does that compare with this 14,235 versus the...
Yeah, I'm not sure where he gets the 14,235.
The 7,9.
The actual personal property of...
I can add to that, sir. I believe there's a 10% later nonfiled penalty on the filing, and I think that's been added in there. Yeah.
Yes, so, but the total personal property, including that, is 15,497,130.
Right, including the penalty. We have the county's assessment detail on, in one of the appendixes, and if you check on page 31 of this, you'll see 14,235,301 as the roll value, which would be the actual value of the equipment excluding the penalty, which wouldn't be relevant to the value, it's simply added on.
The penalty would remain.
Okay, so the, so the difference between the 5 million we heard in the beginning and then 7.9, is that tied into the penalty as well, or is that something else?
No, that's not tied into the penalty. The penalty is over and above.
Yeah, the penalty is added. I believe it would be reduced, should the board reduce it?
So you're saying, maybe I'm getting ahead of things, but you're saying it's, your opinion is 7.9, it's not 5?
Correct, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, okay, that's what I was trying to get at. Okay, thank you.
That would conclude my presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Now, at this point in time, we'll ask Tom and his staff to present their side.
I'm sorry, there's a time for clarifying questions, I believe. Was there not for the assessor to ask questions of the applicant?
If we, we can maybe, we could do it now, or we could do it after we present and rebut back and forth.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't, unless the staff...
Yeah, I would stipulate to that.
Are you right, you're right with that, sir?
At the assessor's pleasure.
Okay.
Unless, unless the staff has any questions.
I'm sorry, what was, when did you just concede?
Basically, asking questions now or waiting till after both sides present?
We're good.
We can just wait.
We're...
Unless you have some questions now, they're pressing.
No, we're good.
And the board asked questions as they were going along, that's why I tried to do it that way, but, yeah, so we're fine with, you're fine with that, sir?
I am, sir, yes.
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Very good.
And staff.
So presenting for the assessor's office, I have Laura Nakarado, my assistant assessor. Laura's been with the office for over 14 years, and she has a bachelor's in accounting, she has her advanced appraisal certificate, and she's experienced in all types of appraisal. And also assisting Laura is Eric Bailey, appraiser three for the office. He is the retired assistant assessor from Monterey County Assessor's Office with over 35 years of experience. He's been with our office working on special projects for over seven years. Eric also has his advanced appraisal certificate as well, and he's extremely knowledgeable on all aspects of appraisal. So let him go ahead and present.
So in your packets, you'll see, is the mic on?
Speak into the mic, please.
In your packets, you'll see the presentation, and then there's also a packet for the exhibit, so you're not having to flip back and forth to the whole thing. First, oh, good morning, Chair and members of the board. First, we're going to go into a little bit of history with the company. Peninsula Packaging specializes in making preformed containers to contain fruit and vegetables for growers throughout the United States. They purchased the company in 2011 from Packaging Plus LLC through a series of transfers. Berkeley Operations LLC was the legal owner of Packaging Plus. This entity had four locations, Hollister, two in La Mirada, and a plant in Yakima. Berkeley Operations LLC created Ag Thermforming and transferred all assets from the four plants to this entity. Ag Thermforming was then sold to Packaging Holdings Incorporated, and in December 2011, these assets were moved to a subsidiary called Peninsula Packaging with a single-member owner of Packaging Holdings Incorporated. Packaging Holdings Incorporated purchased the assets for roughly 54 million. Personal property and fixtures were valued at that time at 16 million. And your first exhibit, A, is just a breakdown of those assets per plant at that time. And this was gathered from a 2014 audit that was conducted by our office. So at that time that we did the audit in 2014, a tour of the facility was also done during the audit process with myself, the assistant assessor at the time, Cheryl Tyler, and Sean Morrison, who is now our chief appraiser. There was no mention, nor did we observe any concerns of functional or economic obsolescence at that time. The company was then acquired by Sunoco in 2017. Along with the Hollister plant, there were three U.S. plants acquired, with another California plant located in Exeter and one plant in Mexico. This acquisition totaled over 218 million. In September of 2018, they made the announcement that the Hollister plant would be closing and did so by the end of 2018. So as stated before, the year under appeal is 2018. It is the duty of the assessor to assess personal property at fair market value as of the lien date, which for consideration of this appeal would be January 1st, 2018. The applicant is appealing the personal property value of the equipment, even though on his application, we, he indicated his opinion of value for leasehold improvements should also be reduced by 50%, which was just an arbitrary number, but I think we clarified that he's only arguing the personal property value today. The cost approach is the most frequently used method of evaluation of personal property and fixtures for assessment purposes because it lends itself to mass appraisal and is employed based on information provided on the yearly property statements. And that is per California State Board of Equalization's Assessors Handbook, Section 504, page 50, and I also included that in your exhibit packet. Our 2018 assessment is based on the information which was provided on the 2017 business property statement because there was no 2018 statement filed with our office. We carried over the 2017 information, placed a small estimate for possible acquisitions due to the nonfiled, and applied a 15-year life on the production equipment, which is standard in this industry and recommended by the Board of Equalization, as you'll see in your next exhibit, LTA, Letter to Assessor, 2008-56. There was also a 10% penalty which was incurred due to not filing that 2018-571L. So in that exhibit, you'll, these are the state recommendations for tables. You'll see it's a recommended 15-year life on the industrial table, and that's what we propose to use. Unlike real property, personal property is not governed by the base year value limitations under Prop 13. The annual lien date value of personal property is typically derived from using the cost approach and applying the factor tables issued by the State Board of Equalization in the Assessors Handbook, 581. From the reporting on the property statement, the taxpayer indicates if the equipment is machinery or equipment, computers, tools, office furniture and equipment, et cetera. And using this data, the assessor then categorizes the equipment into the appropriate classifications according to the BOE's published tables for proper equipment life to be used for depreciation. The applicant is claiming the equipment suffers from two forms of additional obsolescence. Well, actually, today, he's not claiming economic obsolescence any longer, just the functional obsolescence. The next two pages are from his original presentation that he provided us, including that economic obsolescence adjustment, so I don't think we need to go into that. So if you would like to move on to page seven, again, it's just taken right from his presentation, page seven and eight, it's his calculation. So the assessor's office does not agree with the applicant's assertion of obsolescence due to excess operating costs, and we will illustrate our position on the following pages.
Laura, I think we should look at the, on page six, the assessor's observation, and we're looking at the history.
What's page six, sir?
Page six, and Laura's...
Thank you, sir.
And we're looking at the assessor's observations, and we're looking at the history of cars And, and this plant has been operating, and normally, the industrial plant will operate about 80% typically, they never operate, well, not for a long period of time, but 100%. And this plant, prior to the sale, was operating at what we consider to be a normal operating capacity, and it didn't drop in operating capacity until it was purchased. And so in 2017, it was purchased, and they closed it very, you know, not far from the time that they purchased it. So, you know, we're looking at, you know, it was operating normally, and they, and they closed it right after they purchased it. So you can't look at 2017 as being a typical year of operation. They made a business decision to close this plant and started closing it down. So before the purchase, before Sunoco, it was operating at normal capacity.
Yes, sir, we're going to let the individual jump in real quick.
Yes, I would just have a point of clarification. The assessor testified that this was a purchase of the plant, this is a merger of the two plants.
Okay, a merger. That's right. For the record, it was a merger?
It was not a sale, so you're not purchasing the plant.
But there's, but you still can't, there is a large decrease in the production. It went from 79% to 60%?
Yeah, I would not, I would not disagree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, to be clear, it was a change of ownership of an entity.
Okay, change of ownership, merger, okay. Go ahead, thank you, sir.
Just a recap of his presentation.
He stopped at the bottom, page eight, yes.
Okay, we're going to go to page nine because seven and eight is just his...
Reiteration.
...presentation, okay. So I'd like to talk a little bit about comparing operating costs. I would like to point out that the applicant is using data from the Yakima plant as a comparable to the Hollister plant. When comparing operating costs of the replacement property to the subject, the applicant must use a comparable that has similar labor, material, and overhead costs. The applicant has not done this. It is impossible to compare operating costs in another state to California because there are significantly different direct and indirect costs of manufacturing and local regulations. Yakima has much lower energy, labor, and overhead costs. We were wondering why the plant in Exeter was not used as a more realistic comparable. Moving out of state to take advantage of less expensive operating costs is not indicative of excess operating costs due to the machinery. If there is excess operating costs, the applicant has not identified what characteristics of the machinery is causing that obsolescence. BOE's factors are used to calculate replacement costs new, less normal depreciation on a mass appraisal basis, and the appraiser's definition of normal depreciation is normal loss of value from any cause. It is our position that the depreciation tables developed by the State Board of Equalization adequately measure the loss of value due to depreciation. As defined in the AH 504, the Assessors Handbook, functional obsolescence is due to the, due to the design of the equipment itself. No reliable information has been provided by the applicant to indicate additional obsolescence as outlined in LTA 2010-30. During our field visit to the plant to conduct a recent audit, our staff did not observe any additional obsolescence, nor was it brought to our attention by any of the plant managers at that time. The applicant assumes in his presentation that the equipment was scrapped when the plant closed and therefore has no remaining economic life, but this argument is contrary to the known facts. In Revenue and Taxation Code, Section 441D, request, I asked the applicant what happened to the equipment from the Hollister plant. At that time, his response was, according to the taxpayer, a few items were moved to Exeter and the rest was scrapped. He also stated he would check with Exeter to see what they received, but that information was never provided. Again, there is no verifiable evidence being presented to validate the applicant's statement. In fact, we have information from Sunoco to Tulare County that the personal property and equipment was largely moved to the Exeter plant. And in your exhibits, you'll see the 571L from Sunoco that was filed with Tulare County, and on page three of that, in the remarks section, they clearly state that many of the assets were moved to that plant. Clearly, this tells us that the equipment is not worth merely a scrap value, which the applicant is claiming. And why was the business property statement for 2018 not filed in San Bonito? If the equipment was being scrapped or transferred out of the county, this statement would have told us that and detailed what happened to the equipment. Based upon a history of acquisitions at that Hollister plant, there were recent acquisitions up until Sunoco stopped reporting in 2018, and it is highly unlikely that this recently acquired equipment would have been scrapped. According to what we know, the equipment was not scrapped, and there is no indication that the plant's... that the plant suffered from any additional obsolescence.
Can I let the applicant say a word real quick? Is that all right with you, Laura?
Yep.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. So a couple, couple comments there. The assessor states that we're looking for scrap value, we're looking for an $8 million value on a $15 million assessment. That is not scrap value, scrap value is generally considered in the personal property world to be about 10%, 5% to 10%, so we're not, we're certainly not asking for scrap value. Now, there were some.
Well, in your, in your application, however, your opinion of value was 5.1.
Yeah, that's true, but we are not held to that value, and oftentimes, you know, when you're, when you're filing appeals, you need to, you're required to put a number down, you have not had a chance to go through and do proper analysis to actually come up with the proper value, and I think that's very common.
Wait a minute, you're asking for additional depreciation due to functional obsolescence?
We're fine with this, Barbara, we're fine with this, Barbara. I talked to Tom, we're fine going back and forth this way. Tom said it was all right also. Is that all right with you, the way we're doing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As long as everybody's in agreement, I think we're fine.
I'm making the point that you're taking additional depreciation of values that are already depreciated. So if you want to measure the total depreciation, you have to go back to the replacement cost new, take what depreciation from what the assessor is using as normal depreciation, and then you're adding to that. So it's a much lower value than what you're stating.
That's correct, but it is not scrap value, and that is the approach that the State Board of Equalization advocates for. You do use depreciated cost and apply the inutility or excess operating cost penalties to that value. The idea is it's additive. Physical depreciation, which is what you're talking about now, economic obsolescence, functional obsolescence, technological obsolescence, they can all be additive, and that's, that's very well documented.
Well, the value that you stated is now going to be much lower if you take it off the RCN, and it's gonna be close to a scrap value.
No, we're talking about a $15 million value, we're going to 8 million.
$15 million value, that's already been.
I, I see what you're saying, okay, so.
It's already been depreciated.
It, it has been depreciated. That's, it's still not a scrap value.
Okay, well, just proceed.
Okay, and then I think ultimately this case comes down to the difference between Hollister and Yakima, I think we all, we can all see that, and.
Okay.
Excuse me, at this point, I think you're going into another presentation.
Yeah, I apologize.
And I think we should ask questions after the presentation.
That's fine, Tom, whatever, whatever you're comfortable with, Tom. Go ahead, Laura.
Can I just ask a question? Why was the Yakima plant used as a comparison as opposed to the one in Exeter?
Ma'am, the Yakima plant was used because that is where the orders were actually moved to. That would make more sense if I were to make a comparison between Exeter and Hollister, but the orders went to Yakima.
What does Exeter do?
Exeter does a little bit more general work, they do this type of work, but they also do other things.
Do they do identical units as the ones that Hollister was?
Not so much, they, it's a bigger plant, so they do more.
But do they do the same units? Okay, let's just say there's 100% capacity, or in just gentleman's, 80% is normal operating in this type of industry. What percentage of that is the same type of output as Hollister?
I couldn't speak to that.
But is, but is there same identical units being made there?
I believe there are.
Okay, thank you.
I would also add.
Thank you. Go ahead, Laura.
Thank you.
That's what you're asking.
So in summary, all additional functional or economic obsolescence must be supported by reliable and verifiable evidence. The applicant must provide data that would show a viable quantitative analysis of factors like reproduction versus replacement cost and technological disadvantages or inefficiencies. And as stated in the BOE's LTA 2010-30, which is the guidelines for substantiating additional obsolescence for personal property and fixtures on page nine, the preferred method of obtaining such is the market approach when reliable data is available, because it captures all forms of depreciation, including external and functional obsolescence. Examples of market data would be things such as market studies or price listings and used equipment price guides. Data such as this was not provided by the applicant. Functional obsolescence is the loss of value in a property caused by the design of the property itself. For example, when the capacity of a property to perform the function for which it was intended declines, functional obsolescence is present. Functional obsolescence may include such things as changes in the taste in the marketplace, changes in equipment design, materials, or processes. Again, there's no evidence provided by the applicant that this was the cause of functional obsolescence.
Connect a quick question for both of you, Laura. This is just so the new board members have an idea of this also. If my sales decrease, if I owned a company, I was in Hollister, my sales decreased, but my personal property remained the same.
Yes.
I would still be, charge the tax based upon the personal property, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to, just wanted to clarify that. You understand what I'm saying? Be, yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay. For economic obsolescence to be present, an entire industry must be affected by market forces that are outside their control. There is also no evidence provided to demonstrate that market as a whole was experiencing as such. In addition, it only makes sense the production slowed down once the business decision was made to shut down the Hollister plant. I don't know if this is in his current presentation or the one he previously provided me, but he had stated that the closing of the Hollister plant was a direct result of the newer Yakima plant and its lower unit production costs, I believe he said that.
Yes, I see that, Tony, yeah.
We don't feel that is accurate. The Yakima plant also closed its facility in December of 2020, and it primarily closed due to a loss of a large customer and perhaps a result of poor management decisions. Furthermore, there very well could have been acquisitions or disposals for that matter made during 2017 that are not accounted for due to the nonfiling of the 2018 business property statement. The applicant is also unable to provide that information, saying there was no capital expense budget for 2017 since Sonoco knew the plant was going to be closed in 2018. In other words, Sonoco knew they'd be closing this, this plant immediately following the acquisition. The assessor considered all forms of depreciation, and there is no evidence of additional obsolescence as defined in LTA 2010-30. So again, because there was not a business property statement filed for 2018, which is the year under appeal, the assessor, we did make an estimate and carried over previous values. So upon further review and discussion with the applicant, there are some adjustments that may be warranted, and they're as follows. There was a $20,000 estimate made for possible new acquisitions because we did not know since nothing was filed. I am proposing to remove that. The 10% failure to file penalty must stand per Section 463 of the R and T Code, because it states if any person who is required by law or is requested by the assessor to make an annual property statement fails to file an annual property statement within the time limit specified by Section 441, the penalty of 10% of the assessed values of unreported tangible personal property of that person placed on the current rule should be added to the assessment. So the, basically, the penalty would stand. In review of the assessment, I did find that we were using a commercial 15-year rather than an industrial 15-year life.
What is the difference in that, Laura?
I'm sorry, what?
What's the difference in your commercial versus industrial?
It's different tables, and they, they think that industrial tables do depreciate a little bit faster because they're being used more than commercial sites.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So by changing that table, it would reduce the assessment by approximately 171,000. On the 2017 business property statement, there was a CIP, which is construction in progress, amount reported of 476,142. That number was just carried over to the next year since nothing was filed, and we didn't know any different. The applicant clarified that that was more than likely tooling, so I made that adjustment in the assessment, which would reduce that value to, by, by 119,036.
Okay.
So the assessor's office is proposing a net reduction of 310,210. So in conclusion, I'm asking the board to find the value for the 2018 assessment as follows. The structural improvements would remain the same. Fixtures, 2,000, 214,000, 005. Personal property, 15,103,594, bringing the total assessed value, 16,906,188. And in your exhibits, I just gave you some printouts. It does have the detail of the equipment, it has a before summary from our property tax database, and an after with the totals there, just. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Tom? Is that all right if he is to speak?
Yes, you can go ahead.
Go ahead, sir.
Board Member Medina, you mentioned moments ago, you asked the assessor if my sales declined, would I still have to pay the same amount of tax? The answer is yes under the cost approach, but there, if your sales decline, that is a form of what's called external obsolescence. I'd just like to read the definition because I think it's relevant here, too. This is from Assessor's Handbook, 504. External obsolescence, also known as economic obsolescence, is a loss in value resulting from adverse effects external to the property. This type of depreciation may include loss in value due to inflation, high interest rates, legislation, environmental factors, reduced demand for the product, increased competition, changes in raw materials, and increase in cost of raw materials, labor, and utilities.
But none of that was effective here, it was a change of, it wasn't really a reducing or a legislation or cost of materials, it was changing your business model from Hollister to another state because you're taking advantage of the lower cost of labor.
Correct, correct, and that is, that, that, I would put, I would definitely.
I mean, I don't see that, I, I see like if you're talking about legislation, if there was something that affects everything, but what you're doing is you're just using that because it's a wise business decision to move from one state to another to take advantage of that. So I think, you know, you, you'll reap the rewards in the following years, because you're, you are at a less cost per unit from here until eternity, whereas if you stayed in California, you would be paying a higher tax. So I think what you're, what I'm trying to say is you'll reap the rewards in the future.
Right, from that point, I would agree. I think, I think what I would say is this functional obsolescence, excess operating cost argument, definitely blends into technological obsolescence and economic obsolescence when you're looking at, at the plant level. For instance, I like, I just read the definition of external obsolescence, one of the items is increased competition.
Right, but you withdrew your argument for economic obsolescence.
Let's have some clarifying questions, and then maybe arguments appear.
That's what we're doing right now, right? Are we, that's what we're doing right now, Barbara, I think, am I correct on that?
I believe so.
Yeah. It's not an argument, we're just, discussion, we never argue.
Discussion among friends.
He, he can present, and then we can rebut.
Okay, good, that's fine, Tom, thank you for being the mediator.
So I think you, like I said, I think, I think this functional obsolescence argument lends itself towards technological and economic obsolescence, and one of the things that external obsolescence talks about is an increase in competition. If you've got two plants, and one of them can produce a lot less than the other plant, and you've got a competitive imbalance, regardless of whether it's within the same ownership structure, that plant is still outperforming this plant, and that caused the closure. And I think there's an argument to be made that that's still relevant, that's still a, a form of obsolescence. What we're trying to get to here is obsolescence, whether it's, whether you want to call it functional obsolescence, whether you call, want to call it.
No, I, yeah, I.
Ultimately, this event occurred because of that difference.
Yeah, and I understand, competition amongst operating companies, to, this is my opinion.
Yes, sir.
Between two companies that I own is different than, from a third party, because once again, I, I'm looking at it a little bit different because I still feel, you know, I, I have ran plants before, and I understand the, the reasons why we do certain things.
Yes, sir.
And I, I know even when we go into mergers, acquisitions, or sales, that there is a game of chess, a strategic plan that we have in the future. So that's, that's kind of where I'm having a hard time.
I understand.
And that's, that's just me personally, so it's my, my opinion, but not, not as the board, just personally.
Thank you, thank you for that. I don't think I have anything else that the assessor would like to.
Do we have anything else, Laura?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to point out, in reviewing the company's 10K report.
And a 10K report is what?
The, with the Securities and Exchange Commission for the corporations. They typically, this company buys, and, oh, I shouldn't say buys and sells, acquires properties. And since even Yakima plant is shut down now, so he's comparing the plant to Hollister as less operating expenses, however, now that plant's closed too, so.
That could have been, I mean, I hate to say it, but that could have been a business decision, like I said, it could have been a lot of different things. I, I know I want to say one thing for the record, Laura, with, with all due respect to you, is, you know, we had brought up poor management a little while ago. I would say that's an assumption, you know, poor management, I mean, there are external factors of why companies decide to go a different route, so I would, I would really, not, I'm not saying strike that, but I'm not listening to the poor management part, but, but you are correct, you know, there are companies in there that, you know, they, they have a model, and they, they buy and sell different companies. I'm not sure if this is the company I'm speaking of, I don't even think of it right now, I'm just looking at what, what we're looking at in front of us, and I know where, what I'm thinking right now, but is there anything you can say, sir, on that?
In terms of the closure?
Yes, on the Yakima?
I'm aware that it's, it's just declining, declining demand is, is the issue, they've just had a tough time, and that's just how it's gone.
Okay. Anything else, Laura? Yes, sir?
I'd like to just, you know, I've been listening to this argument.
Yes, sir.
And the issue kind of comes down to they moved to Yakima because of lower operating costs.
Yes.
And that's probably the case. Up in Yakima, you have cheap electricity because you have the Ponder River, the bond of the oil, electricity, water is very cheap, labor is cheap up in Yakima, the eastern Washington. But that affects the total business value. It, that effect, that's a locational adjustment. Under California property tax law, the assessment of personal property and equipment is a separate appraisal unit. A personal property equipment is gonna have the same value whether it's in San Francisco or whether it's on Pisens. To go up and use Yakima that has lower labor costs is not gonna affect the value of the equipment, it's the same equipment. The issue is here, what is it in the design of that equipment that makes it less efficient? And therefore, we should apply this, and we should apply extra obsolescence to that equipment. But we don't see it, there's no evidence that the design of that equipment, as defined by functional obsolescence, has any loss of value. A locational adjustment is trying to be made, and that involves real property and business value.
And I concur, I mean, you know, I look at it the same way, so, I mean, I don't know if any of the other board members have any questions.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, that's, I guess, the crux of the matter, that I'm, I'm seeing exactly that. You're arguing, as the applicant, that functional obsolescence matters because of the difference in operating expense between two totally, totally different locations, and I, I can understand, you know, a business reason for doing what you did, but I don't see how that affects the value of the equipment. In the beginning, you said the equipment itself is, really, it sounded to me not a lot different than the equipment up in, in Yakima. So I guess I'm having a hard time saying, I mean, I've been in business as well, the equipment is the equipment, whether it's, whether it's here or it's in Yakima, that, you know, that equipment has a value, and I guess I'm having a hard time seeing the argument that the fact that it's, it's obsolete because Yakima's, you know, got lower expenses, I, I just don't make the connection there.
Yeah, I think a couple things, again, the gentleman with the assessor mentioned the scrap value, I just looked at. I just looked at costs as assessed as twenty-four and a half million. We're asking for eight million, that's thirty-three percent. That's not ten percent, so I just want to get that on the record. But the, ultimately, this comes down to the competitive landscape of the products being made. I mean, Yakima and Hollister and Exeter, they're all in the same, they all service the same general area. If you've got a plant that is older and it costs more to produce at, you got a newer plant that you just built, costs less to produce there, this older plant is suffering from obsolescence, there's no doubt about it. The State Board of Equalization created that, that analysis for that point. I mean, if we can't use it in this case, I cannot think of a, of an example where we couldn't use it.
So, so, but then I, I guess you're just, obviously, you're disagreeing with, I'm just hearing the county's argument that is claiming that that does not apply in this case. You're, you're claiming otherwise. Maybe I can hear more about, you know, why you feel differently than they, you know, there's two different opinions about that. I guess that's what it's coming down to. You're saying this should be applied, and county's saying, no, it doesn't apply in this case.
Well, I think it comes down to this. If you were the owner of the Hollister plant and the Yakima plant was a competitor and they were able to produce their product at, I think it's like twenty-nine percent less, would you be able to stay in business if they're servicing your same client base? They're going to, they're, they're going to be able to take your business away.
Right, but it's...
Loss of business is a form of obsolescence.
Right, but, but there's a difference in, in business there because, not because the equipment, but because of the difference in operating the, the plant in Yakima versus Hollister, has nothing to do with the equipment.
Yeah, I would say that the calculation is a functional obsolescence calculation, but it definitely bleeds into technological and economic obsolescence. This is why we withdrew our economic obsolescence argument, because I, we took some time and we looked at really what was happening, and we said, okay, if we were to present the excess operating cost analysis with the inutility formula, which is, I'm sure you guys have dealt with that before, that's, that's, that's a wholly external obsolescence analysis. We don't want to double dip. So we dropped the, the economic obsolescence portion of this, this adjustment, and simply said, look, this bleeds into all three types of obsolescence. It's functional, it's technological, and it's, it's economic. It's technological because the layout of the Yakima plant is, has a better design, it's newer, it's got, it, it just costs less to operate. It's functional in that their, well, functionality, machinery can't, can't be the same, they may have a different layout, things like that. And then it's external where you've got a plant that's producing the same thing you have, that you are, but the inputs are less, and that's clearly, clearly delineating...
No, I understand, I understand all that.
Yes, sir.
But I guess what would be the, again, you're arguing that this functional obsolescence applies in this case to the equipment, and the county's up arguing that it does not. And maybe, county, you can further respond to the reason why it does not apply, although you've already made your point, I believe.
Well, I think the point is that it has not been proven that the excess operating cost is due to the machinery itself.
Right. Correct. But, but his argument is, is that this, this exception should be applied in this case. You know, the functional obsolescence should be applied due to, you know, other, other factors, and you're saying it should not. It should go back to looking at the equipment itself.
You have to look at the equipment itself.
Right.
With a separate appraisal, under California property tax law. So don't mix it up, you're the whole company. So we have, and the LTA that was designed by the state separates those different forms of functional obsolescence, and it gives us a technique to focus on each form of obsolescence. And given the information we have, based on our visits to the plant, we don't see that it's functional obsolescence due to the equipment.
And, and his argument that it's, the equipment is not the issue here, you don't, you don't agree with, basically. Because he's pointing out in the beginning, there's this exception that he's using obsolescence that, that he's driven by other factors other than equipment itself, and you would not agree with that.
Can you please speak into the mic? Can you please speak into the mic, sir? Sorry.
Oh, excuse me. The basis of this appeal is focusing on obsolescence due to functional obsolescence. So that's what the focus of this is. Economic obsolescence due to external factors, that's another argument.
Yes.
And he's already conceded that we're not going to argue that. And he wants to mix them up now. But the State Board letter that we're following separates them very clearly and distinctly, and that is the job of the appraiser to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask?
Just, just one thing, just for clarity, I think for everyone, is the way I look at it, and I can be completely wrong, I'm not an expert, if, let's call them clamshells, because that's what I'm used to calling them. If clamshells went away and we, there's no more sales whatsoever, then I would feel, yes, I would agree with you, because there is no machine use for that product. But clamshells did not go away. They're still readily available, and the demand is, is there. So that's, that's kind of how I'm basing my decision. I can be, you know, wrong on that, but I'm just saying that's, that's kind of what I look at.
Well, and the fact that, as was argued, the, that much of this equipment is being used still.
Yes, yes. Be, sorry about that.
If I could follow up just really briefly on what Eric just said. I would just point out that the section of that letter that he copied in his exhibits pertains to the economic obsolescence argument, which he's not, he's no longer making. So the, the, that part of the LTA that he keeps citing to is supportive of the economic analysis, economic obsolescence analysis, not the functional obsolescence analysis.
I think that, what I, what I would say is, and this has been something that's been discussed at other assessors' office, this functional obsolescence due to excess operating cost, it, it's not solely functional obsolescence. It can be created by external obsolescence. So you could have a situation where demand for your product drops, so your, your cost of manufacture goes up. You could have a situation where a new plant gets built and its, its costs are less, so that's a competitive advantage, it's putting your plant out of business, and that, that would be considered external obsolescence. So we're using a functional obsolescence formula, but we're suggesting that it's probably more economic obsolescence in nature. I, I think, honestly, I think it's all three. I think there's some technological obsolescence, I think there's some functional obsolescence, and I think there's some economic obsolescence. All at work here. That's causing the closure of the plant.
Yes, okay. So I'm listening to what you're saying, and, and forgive my ignorance, but this is the first time I've been exposed to this. I don't own a business, but I do understand that when you acquire property, there's personal property that's attached to the business. And so when you first presented and you gave us the Exhibit B, I immediately asked myself, well, is there some sort of salvage value to the existing equipment? Whether it moved to Yakima, Exeter, or State here in Hollister, whether it's in storage, there's an existing value to the personal property, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Generally speaking, and I wouldn't want to speak for the assessor, but in my experience, salvage value is usually five to ten percent of the total cost. Our total cost here is twenty-four and a half million. We're asking the boards enroll, I think, eight million, so that's thirty-five percent of that cost. So we're not asking for scrap value, and we do acknowledge that there is going to be some value to that equipment that was transferred over, but it goes back, the whole thing goes back to manufacturing line is a very...
I, I understand that, and you, and you didn't let me finish.
Oh, I apologize.
And so, so the equipment that you have is not compatible with, with the stock that you have.
It's not, it's hard for me to say that because there's a lot of components. So it's hard, it's hard to...
And I, and I understand what you're saying, but again, there is personal property that by law has to be taxed, has to have an assessed value, and operative or business has to pay for that, that property, right, that personal property. It just, it's just a given. So I guess maybe my next question is, why wasn't there a business statement filed in 2018 that may have described the diminution of value, the obsolete nation, nature of what happened to the personal property or the disposal thereof that might have not created the situation that we're in right now?
My understanding is that with the plant closing several months after, after the deadline, there was just, it just became a kind of a mess, and certain people had left, and the person that, that was, was responsible for filing that, that filing just wasn't there anymore, and it just got missed. It's...
We'll bring it back to the board. Any other questions?
Yeah, well, can we, can we proceed with our question, Angela? Can I just clarify that there's no more questions?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Can we clarify that there's no more questions from either party to any of the other, the other party, that we've done all the questions that the assessor, do you, does the assessor have any additional questions?
Not, not a question, just a comment.
Well, let's do the arguments, I mean, the rebuttal later.
Can I make a quick comment? Not a rebuttal, but just a quick comment?
Yes, you can.
Okay. So, you know, they, they bought the facility in 2017. You know, our assessment is of, as of January first, 2018. Then they closed the plant towards the end of 2018. You know, I, I think they had plenty of time to file a property statement. Not only that, they, they had multiple locations, and, you know, I'm not sure if they filed at the other locations or not, but, you know, I believe they, they bought this facility, was it March of 2017? Is that correct? So that's plenty of time to file a property statement, but no call was made to us. You know, they did not reach out to us so we could look at it and go out, physically look at it at that time. I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay. So the assessors, you, you have all your, your, you have all your questions in, and you've also, do you, you don't have any additional rebuttal evidence to present?
Unless staff has anything. Nope.
Nope.
We're good.
For the applicant, do you have any additional questions or any rebuttal evidence that you'd like to present?
Uh, no, ma'am, I think we've, we've covered it.
Okay, so then we'll move to closing arguments by each party?
Okay. Closing arguments, do you have anything?
You go first? So I...
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
I was looking right at him, sorry for...
Uh, well, board members, first, thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. I know it's a strange time to be doing this, but I, I really appreciate it, and the taxpayer appreciates your consideration here. Ultimately, the, I think the case comes down to the fact that this plant closed because of these, the difference in production, and that is a form of obsolescence that needs to be addressed. Whether you want to call it functional, economic, or technical, or technological, it's still obsolescence. You're still trying to come up with a number that's affected, that, that represents the loss in value due to this difference in production cost. The assessor, you know, points to the functional obsolescence and says, well, you know, it's functional obsolescence, and it's not related to the machinery. I think that misses the point. I think the assessors, with respect, is asking the board to ignore the forest, you know, the closing, the difference in cost, production cost, all those things, and focus on, look, this is, this is technically defined as functional obsolescence. This, this formula is technically functional obsolescence, but, so we shouldn't really allow it to be used for other forms of obsolescence. But I think it's the most relevant calculation because it is the reason why the plant closed. With that, I, I would ask the board to enroll a value of seven point nine million for personal property fixtures, and thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Staff?
We feel we've already given our closing argument.
That's, she's the DA, I can't take her on.
Shirley Murphy, Deputy County Counsel, appearing on behalf of the assessor. The assessor is entitled to the presumption that they have regularly and correctly assessed the property for taxation and properly perform their duties pursuant to Evidence Code Section 664 and Property Tax Rule 321A. Therefore, the taxpayer has the burden to establish by a preponderance of the evidence that the value on the assessment roll is not correct by presenting independent evidence relevant to the full value of the property. Even if they were to show the assessor's value is wrong, the assessor's presumption of correctness is not rebutted if they do not provide evidence of the correct value according to Property Tax Rule 321A. This has already kind of been drawn out, but I just, for the record, want to clarify that the application itself requested reduced values for three things, the improvement slash structures, the fixtures, and personal property. According to the presentation today, and as discussed previously with the assessor's office, the taxpayer is not arguing reduction, is no longer arguing or requesting a reduction for the improvement slash structures or fixtures. However, that has not been formally withdrawn. In the assessor's presentation, Assistant Assessor Nakarado did indicate that she had taken a clean, clean look at that calculation, and she has suggested a reduction in the opinion of value to two hundred and fourteen thousand, five dollars for the fixtures, but no reduction on the improvement slash structures. Therefore, since that hasn't formally been withdrawn, we would want to make sure that the board, but no evidence has been presented by the taxpayer. We would ask that the board formally find that the taxpayer failed to meet their burden of proof on those two issues and uphold the assessor's opinion of value as orally revised and in her written presentation today. The personal property is the crux of the issue, and there was previously in communications between the taxpayer's representative and the assessor's office, there was an argument of both economic obsolescence and functional obsolescence. Now that has been sort of winnowed down to just the functional obsolescence argument. Since no annual statement was filed for 2018, which is required by Revenue and Taxation Code, Section 441A, the assessor did make some assumptions regarding the assets based on previous year's statements. And she has, of course, taken some, in further discussions with the taxpayer's representative, has recommended further adjustments to that calculation to be reduced to fifteen million, one hundred and three thousand, five hundred and ninety-four. So the assessor did request information to establish the taxpayer's opinion of value pursuant to Revenue and Taxation Code 441D in January and March, and then there were also intervening emails between the two. Some, but not all of the requested information was provided. The assessor did some independent research and discovered some evidence based on the records in the Tulare County assessor's files. So we would argue that based on the application of the methodologies in the assessor's manual, which by the way, the assessor's manual is, there are twenty-eight sections. This chunk right here is only Section 504, and it's about two hundred and sixty pages. The, that's the section for assessment of personal property and fixtures. There's the Section 581, which I would say is probably around maybe forty or fifty pages. That is the Equipment and Fixtures Index Percent Good and Valuation Factors. And then there are the additional letters to assessors, which have been discussed by both the taxpayer's rep and by Ms. Nakarado. The assessor, in their professional training and judgment, are, have to be familiar with all of these methodologies and tables and whatnot that are in these sections, as well as the other, I guess, twenty-six. And they apply them according to standardized processes set forth by the State Board of Equalization. And we would argue that the taxpayer has not provided sufficient independent evidence to establish the, to rebut the presumption that the assessor has regularly and correctly assessed the property for taxation and properly performed their duties pursuant to the Evidence Code and Property Tax Rules cited, and that the taxpayer has not established by independent evidence, not only that they applied all of these rules incorrectly, but that they also have, they also have not provided independent evidence that is adequate for the reasons that have been discussed by Mr., by Eric and Laura, and also in some of the questions that your board members have asked.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding the location... Regarding the locational versus the inherent qualities of the equipment itself. And therefore, we would argue that they have failed to meet their burden of proof and that we would ask the board to uphold the assessor's opinion of value as modified today to the value of the fixtures and the personal property for a total, a total revised opinion of value of $16,906,188.
Thank you very much. We'll bring it to the board. Board members? Yes, Barbara?
You have the right to deliberate and private.
I don't, I don't think we need to. Sorry. What's, any, what's the wish of the board right now?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we uphold the, the revised assessed value for the county of $16,906,188.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Peter, are you there?
Nay.
Nay? That's four, one. Motion passes.
Yeah, four, one with Supervisor Hernandez.
Yeah, Supervisor Hernandez with a nay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board members. I appreciate your time.
Can I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second it.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Favor, aye. Behold of myself.
Aye.
Thank you, Peter. That, I heard you, aye.